Coming to you straight from the Rio Grande and beyond, broadcasting to the four corners of the globe. So grab your seat, your coffee, or your sundowner.
Okay, everybody, here we go.
On point, as always. This is Gloves Off. Gloves Off. Gloves Off is always on point. Bringing you the best on current issues, community affairs, and the happenings around us. This segment of Gloves Off is brought to you by the best. So pay them a visit, check 'em out. This is Gloves Off.
Back at you in Gloves Off, and I have a dear friend of mine, councilman Vidal Ruiz.
How's it going, Paul?
Well, thank you for being here. And how's the summer?
Oh, well, as you see, sorry for being unaddressed this summer.
That's just the way it is. Don't worry about it. It's, you know, summer, it's hot, and you guys have been working out. You and your wife said that we were working out. That's just the way it is. You know, we have to do that.
Yeah, no, no, it's basically, just keep healthy. It's not that once you be in shape or stuff. It's primarily the health. I mean, you want longevity, you want to be here. You want to know how Laredo turns out in the future. So that's why we go to workout. And the cooling 160 degrees, let's put it that way.
No, no, and it's like that. It's everywhere, you know, and it's kind of crazy. So tell us, what new stuff has happened? What do you foretell that the city's going? All that good stuff.
It's since the last time I've been here, Paul, let's put it this way. We have more of a united council. We, I tend to do the same old issues. It's just keep on working, keep on striving for South Laredo and for the people in general of Laredo. Luckily, I mean, our colleagues, we turned out. And one of the most important things right now to me is working on the, for people to maximize the use of their lots. It's one of the major issues that I have, that people have been telling me, you know what? Why can't we build an extra room? Why can't we build something extra in my backyard, which I hate for? That's one of the reasons that I started pushing this agenda through and say, you know what? We have to give the people a chance if they own their lot. I mean, it's their piece of their own heaven, and they can do whatever they want to do. With the exception of HOAs, like I told them, I mean, once you buy into an HOA, homeowners association, part, they're in charge and they get dictated what you do and what you don't do in your lot. So we will never step on that one.
And how has it been? Have you had good response? Do you see? Because it depends, you know, there's, as we were talking earlier, you said there were open concepts and closed concepts. I want you to explain all that for the viewers out there to understand.
Basically, what an open concept is right now, you can be at two and a half feet from your fence line or property line, which is basically two and a half feet from your neighbor. But it has to be an open concept, basically like a palapa, swimming pool, nothing that has walls or it's attached. And right now, we're trying to reduce it to five feet on a closed concept that you can extend your living area to five feet from the property line, which is five feet on your side, five feet on your neighbor's side. You still have a 10-foot gap. Fires for it, there is no issues if a fire were to break out. We still left the same setbacks on the side, which is five feet. We didn't touch those for safety reasons, like if a fire were to go out, or PD has to go in, or whoever has to come in, you have an access. That's what we're trying to do. On the front side, we did a 10-foot, we're trying to do a 10-foot setback where you allow 10 feet of livable space on your front lawn, bigger driveways with carports to your property line. So people could go ahead and, like you see, it's hot outside in Laredo. It's, we're looking at maybe 90% of the time, 90, 95% of the time, it's always sunny. So you're able to extend your carports to put them under a shade so they won't damage. Or when it rarely hails, it hails. So no damages will come in. And we're trying to get the cars off the streets and into the driveways. This is what we're trying to do. I mean, it's for the people, it's for them, and we have had numerous of fair responses that they like this idea.
How's the rest of the council feeling to that? Do you have a council that is more united today, I think that's a good idea? Or you have some that are being resistant to it?
It's like any other, it's like any other, every other Monday. I mean, you can't tell till we're there. Some like the idea because they understand the needs of the residents, and others have their own opinion about it because they have different area residents in their side. I mean, it's what I always tell them, I respect your opinion as long as you respect mine. But if you attack my opinion, well, I'm going to have to defend it. There's always right or wrong in every choice you get. But at least I'm doing it for the area of my residents and my side that is asking me to do this. They're telling me it's the better way for everybody to live and say, you know what? We want to maximize the use. So I'm going to keep on pushing it. It is what it is.
You know, and when you, and it's actually a good idea, and I'm going to tell you why. Because there's a lot of small businesses that are construction companies. Small construction companies that can do a carport. You're going to be giving them business. They're sheet rock painters, electricians, if they're going to add another room, roofers, and so on and so forth. So this is going to be bringing up more money and spreading out more money towards Laredo. And that's basically what we need. Right now, Laredo, even though the United States is at a low in unemployment, you still see a lot of people here in Laredo that are struggling. And that's what we, I think we have to gain, we have to push. And I think that idea is that it's good because there's always going to be somebody that says, you know what, I already saved this much money to build the carport, or to build that extra room, or extend my den. And I think you're going to see that.
And luckily, you know how the Laredo culture is. More than half of us think, you know what, once I'm old and want to have something sustainable, well, guess what, our parents get older. And we don't like to take them to nursing homes, Laredoans. I tend to think that maybe, you know what, they like to take them home. And once you're able to build that extra room for them for accommodation wise, say, you know what, you don't have to work anymore. You just come home, come to my house now.
We're a family-oriented, end-of-culture.
Yes, it's very much where they say, you know what, we're not going to leave you at your house or an accident were to happen. You want to keep them close by and see them through to their old and they pass on to the next life. That's one of the issues also I was bringing it up. You have to understand, it's, we're allowing people to actually be a bigger, better community within neighbors, within everybody, and say, you know what, we always feel like we're close and united.
No, you're right. Now, what else have you seen? What else have we been looking at? I know that you're saying popped up with something, what's going on with Bartlett? You can explain that.
Well, there's nothing much to explain. I don't drive it. To me, it's still a mess. And they say I'm sorry, not sorry to be vocal about it. I mean, people already know where I stand with that street. It's from Saunders upwards to, if I'm not mistaken, Hillside. It's two lanes going north, one lane going north, two lanes coming southbound with the middle lane. Then you just cross another street and you have one lane coming, it's still in Bartlett, but it's one lane southbound and three going northbound. So to me, it's a mess. I'd rather avoid that street. Instead of it, its major function was to alleviate the traffic of my first sin. I think people avoid it, so the traffic, it's the same, got worse.
You're absolutely correct. I avoid it. And I avoid it since the last time I went down through there, I almost, they almost took my front end. And I was at a stop sign, you know? And it's just the way people are driving it. It's, did it cost more, or this, I don't know, and I don't want to, but I think, what I've seen, what I've read in some of the posts, they say, you know, you're a councilman from the south, why are you intervening here? Blah, 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 and all this jargon. Well, that jargon needs to stop because you're a councilman of the city of Laredo. Understand what I'm saying? Because that means anywhere in Laredo you represent, even though you were chosen in the south, you represent the city of Laredo. So there's a problem anywhere. You have to stand up and say, you know what, hey, you know, I went over to your district and this and this, or they come and tell you in my district, you know what, let me get after it. Let me see what's going on in my district. Let's see what's going on. You understand what I'm saying?
No, no, no.
It's supposed to be the city of Laredo.
And especially, it's not like if, this is a major artery. It doesn't affect, it travels not only one district, but it travels multiple districts. It reaches all the way to District 3. And it would have kept on because I still have a soft Bartlett in my district, which is part of Bartlett. But it's an issue where the residents in my area travel and they call me for the concerns because it's the street that they use to commute, go into home to work and work back. So it's an area of concerns. We're just being, we're just looking out for the small folk and saying, you know what, instead of doing a couple accommodations for some people, you know what? It belongs to the city, it belongs to the people, it doesn't even belong to us. And you could see it, you could see all the painting over it, how much time they have tried to retrofit it, and it still doesn't work. The best, to me, the best time when it worked, it was the original way that they designed it for. It was the two lanes and two lanes, and that's it.
I mean, I understand with some of the folks that were trying to say that it was changed because of the school. Well, yeah, okay, I understand the safety issue with the school. That's why you put signs and say, from 2:00 to 4:00, you do this, like they do it in many other areas, you know? And things like that change, you know?
Yeah, no, no, I mean, maybe that situation would have been fixed with the street light now they have one. You could have left the two and two and just added the street light. I mean, how many people suffered injuries in too many car accidents? To me, it was one too many. Luckily, now people start to understand, you know, maybe they just start avoiding it in general. The accidents were reduced now after so much, but you could see it. I mean, every other day, it changes. Just get the color patterns on the street, on the street patterns. I don't even know what to expect from that street. That's why I just told you, I avoid it in general. I just take the old regular migration or the drive-through.
So now let's, you know, let's leave that behind and move. What projects do you have in your area in the near future that you say, you know what, let's be on the lookout for this?
Projects, we haven't stopped working. Our district is my district, and we haven't stopped working. It's a major issue with sidewalks. We keep on implementing sidewalks. It's a project that I won't be done with it. It's too costly, but at least I know I'll make a dent on it and make a good effort. They say, you know what, we're going to bring more sidewalks. This coming year, we applied for a grant that we got, and it'll provide a safe passageway through schools to homes. So we are going to do some more extra sidewalks. Basically, whatever it is, and like I told you, it's parks. Number one issue, people may complain about parks, but guess what? I'd rather have kids playing in the parks, having a safe place to play, enjoying the outdoors when it's not 160 degrees or 110 degrees. But they can do, enjoy it, and have a facility and safe to play and stretch your legs. I mean, that's important. Many people say, education, yes, education's a priority, but physical education is also a part of life.
For sure, for sure. Because it comes a time that you cannot no longer run, you know? I know a lot of friends of mine that were football players in high school. In their twenties, they already had knee problems because of high school. I know football. And you see them now, and they're in walkers. And number 51, I know a couple of them, they're that way, you know? And you're like, what's going on? You know, so you have, I believe, believe in always exercising and moving forward and being physically, physical about certain things. You know, there's different body types and all this other stuff, but that, you know, it's to each your own. But you have to continue working out. Try to stay, maintain a physical lifestyle.
That's exactly right. That's why we're moving, I haven't even noticed, people started noticing. We're moving in the towards where we're starting to put exercise stations at our parks. So if people were to walk, at least you get there, do that exercise in the station, and that gives you mobility in the form of either stretching or just being limbo, just having somewhere to do, move extra body parts that you thought you couldn't move anymore, or a certain range you achieve.
Why don't we put an outdoor weight somewhere like they do like in Holland, and they do like in France has one, and Brazil has a couple, and I know Mexico has one, California has one? In the park, literally have a weight area for people to go work out.
Let me put it this way.
A men's or a women's?
No, no, it'll be too heavy. No, no, they won't steal it. But I mean, you just told me, you just told me a bunch of countries that are too liberal and one state that's very liberal. And we have a risk management nowadays, people, because if you get cut or if you fall, you just want to put a lawsuit, and it's hard. I mean, we as citizens have to also understand that the way that things used to be run around in the 80s and 90s, we had much more freedom based on what can and cannot, and can't we do. So it is what it is. We're just trying to find means, a way, means around it and say, you know what, I'm trying to give you as best as possible, the closest as you guys, that I know you want. Because you could say, you could talk to me and say, you know what, we used to play outside. I mean, we used to do, we grew up in the Calleja roads and nothing ever used to matter. Nowadays, we have a bunch of people that say, you know what, I'm entitled to something, I'm entitled to shade, I'm entitled to this. We earned it back in the day. I mean, we have worked hard for it. And it's like I say, I mean, and I understand that we want to always give something better to our next generations and what we got. But at this point, we have a lot of hurdles to jump and a lot of walls to cross over in order for us to actually do something. Or they say, you know what, the less physical it is, it'll be the better because it doesn't have that much of a liability. So that's a key word, not having much of a liability.
No, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of good things. I've heard a lot of good things about parks. Two parks in particular, the park you have in the south and a park that's up here in the north, that, you know, wish more of the parks were that way, of those type of concepts. And I said, well, probably in the future, you're going to start seeing that. So I think Laredo's kind of changing and moving in a different direction. What do you foresee Laredo in five years?
Hopefully, the way I am, and everybody knows me, a lot of sports tourism. We have the weather, even though people say it's hot. That's going to be our next move and say, you know what, this is our economic driver. It'll be sports tourism. I've been working on the sports complex, luckily got passed, so we are moving forward on it. And we are going through to that one to incentivize the people to say, you know what, let's go to Laredo, I mean, Macan in San Antonio, Corpus, all the surrounding areas have a sports complex. They do accommodate the youngsters for travel. Why do our people have to go ahead and pay $500 for a tournament? And plus hotel stay, plus food, plus all of that? I mean, if we get to showcase our talent in the surrounding areas, why can't the surrounding areas come and show their talent?
No, you're absolutely correct. You know, I've been seeing, I have a good friend of mine that we became more friends because of, he has a sport complex, Laredo Athletic Complex, where he does basketball and volleyball tournaments and stuff like that. In fact, we held our tournaments here. Why? Because it was very hard to do one in the city. It was hard to get the city to help us out. They helped us out the first two years, and all of a sudden, they come up with some ordinance that doesn't exist to try to shut it down. You're like, parale, a week before. So we had it with the Boys Club. And so this, we talked to them, and we talked with them, and we, and we loved Oyola with the Boys Club, what they've done, because they've always helped us. And the city right there, but I think the city, something's going on with the city. Because we need a lot more, when a youth tournament comes in, when an amateur tournament comes in, the city parks has to stand up and say, you know what, we can accommodate you here. Let's us help you. Not only promote it, let's help you, bring it in, let's fill, let's fill it up. Okay? Boxing has been around here for a long time. Boxing, they have several boxing gyms. Of course, it's very simple to have the boxing tournaments here. And I was very glad that they had the two boxing tournaments that they just had.
Yeah.
To see that, because that hadn't happened in a very long time. When we, we used to have the boxing tournaments, we had to have them in, in the boxing tournament, mind you, not the Sabat, when it's a boxing tournament that we have, we have them at the Boys Club. The Sabat ones, one time we had it at the Civic Center, which we paid. And then the other time, we had it at Farias, which we paid again. But what happens is that we need to understand that there's tournaments here that are amateur that we have to help out. There's karate tournaments, there's volleyball tournaments. So they help out certain ones, and the rest are not. So we have to bring it up because I know that there's talent out there that want to come to Laredo. They want to experience. And it's very hard for people to throw these tournaments, to bring them down if we're not going to have any help. And we need the help. I know that, I know the council wants to help. Okay? But it's just, the council to parks, it's kind of crank. There's so many parks that want to help, and then there's, there's two oddballs in there that don't know what's up or down, you know? And that, all that needs to change. And not only in parks, you have it in the other areas too. You start hearing that resignation, of resonating sound. She was always going to bring a company down, and we ended up with building and planning, and all of a sudden, everything was fine, I was like, err. And you're like, you know, we can't lose those opportunities.
Yeah, we, and I agree with you, we can't lose those opportunities. The city's not perfect, we're not perfect, nobody's perfect. We're just trying to do our best. I'm not a micromanager. I'll let our management do whatever they need to do. And up to this point, I feel very, very, how can I say it? I'm good with our co-council, co-innen city manager.
Sure, they're doing a hell of a job. They're doing a hell of a job, and if, and I think they're doing great. They're both seasoned. And whoever stays, if they stay, I think they'll do a great job, you know? And you have a lot of people in Laredo, oh, we want some from somewhere else, and we want some where... Hey, listen, if they come in here, they spend their time, and they're able to do the job, do it.
What I respect about them is both of them, they tell you yes or no based on the recommendation we asked, and they say their gut feeling and whatever they're thinking about and say, you know what, regardless if, it's not the answer one wants to hear, but they're still going to tell you the correct answer based on how the city should be progressing and how the city will fare with the response or with the item that we're trying to pass. So they're not afraid to be on our wrong side and say, you know what, I'm always going to give you the answer you want to hear. No, they'll tell you straight out, you know what, this is the way it needs to go. You're a council, you set policy, whatever decision you make, but at least I give you my two cents. So that's what I respect about them. And to me, I mean, as long as we have them there, or for the time they get be there, depending on how council feels, they're doing a hell of a job. The city of Laredo has started improving.
No, and they're good, and you see that. You see that energy that they have, you see that will, that they want to do something. The other ones were there too, were doing their job as well. We've, you know, but there's like, you all, the city manager, and then the directors. Then you have the departments and the employees. The employees are doing their work, they're working. But it's, something's happening from the employees to the directors, to directors, to the council and the manager. There's a lack of communication there. Because you might get a complaint, for example, when you got a complaint somewhere here, and you, X, Y, Z department, and you tell them, you know what, can you please, they told me about this, can you take a look at this issue? Oh, yeah, it's fine, we're taking care of it. Or you tell the city manager, oh, you know what, there's an issue in my district on this and this and this. Oh, that's this department, they're going to take care of it. Then you talk to them a month later, was that issue taken care of? Yes. But you don't know if it was or not. And then a year goes later, and that issue became a bigger issue. Now it's a problem. And all of a sudden, you have all your constituents saying, oh, yeah, because she said, no, you told me it was okay, blah, 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 and they blame you. Okay? And then you tell the, the city manager, director, they say, oh, we did it? Oh, we'll do it again. Yeah, that, the circle continues.
It's a cycle.
And it has, there has to be more.
I'll tell you this, this is, it's, you have to be a councilman, a full-time council member, even though we're set at what we're set. But you have to take that time of the day and say, you know what, you have to follow through on your projects. I like to follow through on my, I'm actually one of the councilmen that's considered a full-time council member. I try to visit City Hall every day, say, you know what, this is going on in my district, where my project's at, what's progressing, what do we need, what do we don't need, and stuff like that. But you, you're correct, a lot of the stuff, say, we asked and we tell them something, but nothing gets done. But the fault comes back to us and say, you know what, it's either you get off your feet and regardless, because it's residency, it's the area you represent, not only your district, but Laredo in general, you have to make sure that stuff goes through. Or we have to help, it's either you hold the city managers accountable, or you tell the city managers to hold their employees accountable and say, you know what, this is going on. I'm hearing this, and I'm not seeing the progress made, that needs to be made. I mean, they're not paid with peanuts.
No, no, the majority are very good incomes that are going in there. And it is, it is a company, and believe me, if a lot of mistakes were, because if you worked at any company and you did a bunch of mistakes, or you weren't doing your job, you probably work, you'll be finding a job somewhere else. You know, if that company's supposed to prosper, that's what was going to happen, you know? You know what I mean? And Laredo is a corporation. And, you know, and at the end of the day, you better be doing it or go do it somewhere else. Do what you do somewhere else.
Find another occupancy, because that one you're not being good at.
I think that's what needs to happen. I think once the hammer starts being fallen, you know what, so and so, your time is up.
Yeah, but it shouldn't get, it shouldn't get down to the hammer. I mean, they put you there for a reason, they gave you a chance to...
If they're not doing it, they should be taken down.
A lot of people just go there for the check. It's not being there for a check, man. It's being there because you're public servant regardless. You work there, you're there for the people. I mean, regardless, that's the way I feel. That's why when I came into office, I think our minimum wage was around 825. Now we started to set the bar, now we're at 11 something. And you have to look out for the little guys or...
No, I understand all that. But if it's a continual problem, then the problem needs to be fixed.
Yeah. No, no, and like I told you, it's true. But in order, you have to give them incentives, or you have to work with them and say, you know what, if you do your job, this is going to be better for you. If you don't do your job, this is the end. We have to start thinking outside the box, not the conventional way because apparently the conventional way's not working.
Or, or this conventional, or this, or this conventional way. But then it's fun, it's fun to see, because, you know, I've had Dr. Martin, another councilman, and Mercure Martinez came out, and so did Robert Bali. And they've all said that this council now feels like it's moving forward. They've all said that, you know, the two new ones, as well as, and now you're saying the same thing. So you're now saying, okay, something's going on, something's for the better.
Yeah, yeah, I know, definitely, like I told you, this council is very progressive. It's moving on. I could say we agree 100%, we're never going to agree 100%, but at least I like to think that most of all, I say, you know what, this is for the progress of the Laredo. Regardless, I'll put my ego aside and say, you know what, if it's for a better purpose, for a better cause for the city, let's go with it. I understand it, I'll give it a try.
No, you're absolutely right. What else, what other major projects besides that you, that have been finished or going forward? forward?
Well, after a couple of years, the project I inherited the most, we have been here and talked about it, the Lindsay River is done. I mean, you can ask the people down in South Laredo, not only my district, but it's catered to everybody in South Laredo and Laredo in general. People like it, people enjoy it. You get to do carnasadas. We put a lot of shade because we know Laredo weather. And most of the days, it's at max capacity. That's one of the issues that I get caught, but it's like I tell people, we have to put a capacity because it is what it is. We don't want accidents to happen. And we try to rotate, we try to give everybody a chance and say, you know what, everybody gets to enjoy this, it's a public facility, it's for you guys. So we try to give the same number of minutes or hours for people to use it and come back and keep on enjoying it.
That's excellent. And what else besides the sports complex, ¿qué más tienes aquí? How about work? How about factories, big companies? You were talking about that last time. Have you talked to some?
I've talked to some, but then again, it's, they, they always tell me, please keep it quiet because, but people are going to notice a change on 359. I'll tell you this, I'm not saying who or what, but a couple of franchises are coming in there, the corner of 359 and the Loop. To me, my vision when I started and it's like I said down with everybody, it'll be the McPherson of South Laredo, full of restaurants, hotels. And to close it out at the, at the middle will be the sports complexes, will be the catalyst for that investment. The investment's already going to come in before the year ends, you're going to start seeing the, the new movement. We have the lights coming in for Cuatro Ventos Road, we spoke to Textile about it, myself and Councilman Gonzalez, and we got the funding for full illumination of Cuatro Ventos Road. So I know it's a dark place, people try to avoid that street because at night, because it's too dark, accidents tend to happen. Poor decision driving by other people, so with the illumination that's going to come in, it'll be much, much safer. We have that going on and, well, basically, right now, one of the biggest issues, it's our Fourth of July event. We're coming in, Councilman Gonzalez and myself, we, we're taking the fireworks down there, it's, it's going to be another party for South Laredo, another celebration. Last year, we had over 5,000 attendees, this year, we're expecting more. Our community partners as a county, they're in collaboration with us, they saw the potential, they enjoyed it and say, you know what, we're just doing it. Like I told you, everybody's putting their egos aside and everybody's joining in, forcing together for the community, for the South Laredo and Laredo residents in general.
That's awesome, that is totally awesome. That's what we need, that's what we need. And once that grows in over there, you're going to start seeing a lot more movement. You're going to start seeing a lot more people saying, you know what, let's more, let's invest.
Yeah, no, no, definitely.
That's what we need.
Definitely. And another project that we finished was a Week Center. That was a major project, not only for my district, it is located in District Two, but we worked on it, we worked on it, we worked on it, a couple of millions went into it, but it gives government assistance to the people and especially mothers of, first-time mothers and stuff like that, it'll show them how to go, how to feed their child, it'll, it'll give them that assistance. Hopefully, I'm working with doctors' hospital to also incorporate them into the clinic and say, you know what, give them assistance and mothers who want to, who have options is whether going to our local Laredo Medical Center or going to doctors. It's stuff like that, little issues like that, that I'm trying to work out for the people. And it's like I told you, it doesn't only pertain, again, and sorry if I sound like a broken record, but it's not only for my district, but it's for anybody in general. We have to think outside the box and say, you know what, we are one community. That's about it.
No, no, and you're absolutely right because we are one community. We are Laredo. And that's, that's where we all should focus because Laredo is Laredo. And that's why I keep, I might, might sound like a broken record, but once you guys get elected, it's not, I'm from the south, I'm from the west, I'm from the east, I'm from the central, I'm from, you know what I mean? It's your city councilman of Laredo, you're a Laredo city councilman. And that means you represent.
Every vote you take affects another district, whether you like it or not. And so it's, you have to, it's, we're one community, we're just trying to do best. Well, at least I'm just trying to do my best and accommodate everybody. We can't, never please everybody at once, but we try to do it for the majority and have a common middle ground and say, you know what, now we're going to do this, tomorrow we're going to do that.
You're absolutely correct. So we're, what else do you have? Let's talk about your Fourth of July event.
Fourth of July event, it's our second annual, it's together, it's Councilman Gonzalez and myself. Mercure Martinez jumped in on this one this year, it's just going to be his first year coming to the Fourth of July event. And it's basically for all families, it's, if you don't want to be at the tech coast where there's a fireworks display, it's going to be in Independence Hill. It's going to be food, beverages, water supply staff, or you can even take your own barbecue, you can cook, we're going to, we have designated areas, food vendors if you don't want to cook. It's a big, big family event, it's very enjoyable, we have a swimming pool, we're going to have games, watermelon eating contest, jello eating contest, potato sack races. It's going to, definitely, it's going to be fun.
It's going to be fun. And how about the bands? You said, you, a couple of bands going?
Oh, yes, as far as live, we're going to have live entertainment, it's going to be Externo, it's a Norteno band, and Rick and Ram Band, country music as well, it's, we have to cater to both. It's Fourth of July.
And it'll be great, it'll be great, that's a great event.
Yeah, definitely, definitely, we're going to have constables, we're going to have Laredo PD, it's going to be a very safe event, a very family-oriented event. I mean, if you didn't have a chance to go attend that this year, I'd have to tell you, go this year, it's very nice.
Is there an entry fee?
No entry, free to the public, it's either you just take your food, it'd be whatever you want to cook, or you can buy there off the.
Off the vendors that are there.
Off the vendors that are there.
That'd be excellent. So folks, if you guys want to go out there, it's Independence Park from four to what?
Four to 10:00 PM, 10:00 PM, the fireworks, the spray start.
Okay, and it ends after the fireworks?
It ends, yes, it ends after the fireworks. Luckily, we only get the Fourth of July off, nobody gets the Fifth unless you ask for it, so we got to get back to work. So it's do that.
Again, until next time. Councilman, thank you so much for doing good.
Thank you for always having me.
And folks, be safe, there's a lot of kids out there, and just stop texting and driving, they're out there in bikes and in skateboards, so be careful. Until next time, peace.